This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, May 20, 2024. A reminder that this meeting, as always, will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually using the go-to access information found on our website. Do note, however, that public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman August-- sorry, Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Everyone's here. Good to see. Would you stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did it. Okay, I am capable of learning, apparently, because I remembered to turn the mic on. Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to take a moment to thank and celebrate some of our favorite people because it's Public Works Week. So Phil is here to accept the proclamation. It is National Public Works Week from May 19 through the 25th. And here we go. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people. And whereas public work services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees, and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens of Warrenville to understand the importance of public works and public works programs, and whereas May 19 through the 25th marks the National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim May 19 through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the City of Warrenville. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the challenges involving in providing public work services and to consider and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So Phil, thank you so much, and be sure to thank your staff. They do a superb job. I have yet to field a complaint. Everyone that has to do anything to do with our people says they do a great job. They're professional, helpful, and friendly, and that's what we like. So I know we have a cold, so we'll do that. And we have a special event this week, right?
Yep, Thursday.
Go ahead, please.
Thursday afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. We have our Public Works Open House. It is at the Public Works facility, and you'd enter through the main entrance if you're interested in going.
Great. I will be-- oh, that's for you, though.
Thank you.
Bring the kids. It's really fun to see all the equipment. And I think for all of you, you should be especially proud that you provide those folks who do a great job with the stuff they need to do a great job. And that's no small thing. So I look forward to meeting you there. Okay, the time that we set aside for citizens' comments has arrived. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seabird. Three minutes, Bob, three minutes. I don't think you're going to be able to get through all of that in three. Two minutes? Okay, fair enough.
Two sessions. June, tonight, and then first week.
Okay, fair enough.
Bob Seabird, Albright Court.
Excuse me, Bob. You might want to move that a little closer to you because it's not showing up on the screen. That's much better.
Okay, I didn't want to get in front of it. The board that I brought tonight has five property taxes that were issued this month. That is on the first column. It has the individual tax number, the EAV, the increases from 2022 to 2023. Then under the blue, we have the 2022 city assessment, and then the pension assessment for each property tax below that. And then we have 2023. Then we have the other blue column that shows the difference between 2022 and 2023. The last column is the percentage increase in the property taxes. We see that column here being 17%, 16%, 16 and 1/4, 8%, and 6 and 3/4. Now, the important fact to remember is that in the first column, the EAV, the EAV has no relationship to the total amount of the city's levy. All that does is divide the tax levy amongst the taxpayers. Nothing to do. You can double it, you can triple it. Has nothing to do with the levy of the private hearing that you had a few months ago. Nothing to do with that. The interesting point is that when you did the levy, it was stated 6.6% is the average increase in the EAV. That means that 6.6% increase in our first column there would equal the 4.5% levy that you were putting in over all of the property tax bills. This can be seen on the bottom, 6.4, which is the closest to 6.6. That shows 6.74 increase in actual taxes paid. It should be 4.5. It's the levy that you put in. As we go up to the next item from the bottom, it says 4.99. That means that some of the neighbors are paying that because it's not at 6.6. However, that amount of increase is 8.303. It should be less. In fact, it should be less than the 4.5 because the EAV increase is less than 6.6. As we go up further, we can see the EAVs are 12%, 13%, and 14%. This illustrates that they are paying additional taxes for their neighbors on the 4.5% levy, not on anything else. So if we deduct that percentage, 17, they're paying, 14, there's over 3% excess that we're paying. So what we're seeing with these actual bills is that the taxpayers are paying more to the city of Warrenville than the levy established. We're paying more. All of these figures, everything in here, came out of the tax bills. All I did was create the percentages. If the city of Warrenville had levied the 5% maximum, you still took more from the citizens. So what we're showing is that you tax the citizens, but they're paying more than the levy that you issued. There's a reason for that. We'll see that the first meeting in June. The importance is, all of you can look at your tax bills, determine the percentage increase in the EAV, look at the percentage increase that you're paying, actual dollars that you're paying, and see the difference that's there. See where you fit in the categories. Here, if you're paying your neighbor's portion of the increase, or if they're paying some of yours, or if you're at 6.6, and it's a wash. These, this is, where the little V is, are vacant properties. The one with the highest increase in EAV, 14.9%, is a house that's 80 years old. 17%, 80 years old house. Nothing has been done to change the footprint since 1955. The person that built this house is hanging on the wall over there, Bill Stafford. They're paying, that tax is going up that amount. The other house, second from the bottom, is 90 years old. The one at the bottom that kind of matches is 60 years old. So the age of the houses does not enter in necessarily to the way the assessor established the EAV. The important thing is the percentage of increase from last year to this year, right off of the taxes. You can see yours. You can find it right off of the taxes. You can then determine why this is occurring. Large percentages that are coming in here. The property tax system is a closed system. It's a closed system. So this means that there's some other forces that are occurring outside the levy by the city that are pushing these payments up.
Thank you, Bob.
And we will see that first meeting in June.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak who didn't know they had to sign up? Okay, we'll move on then to official and staff comments. A couple of things. First of all, we had the bicycle rodeo again this weekend. It was a rousing success. I wanted to thank everyone who helped make that happen. And we have a report from Cop on a Rooftop from the chief. How did that go?
Thank you, Mayor. It went great. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out and supported the police department, supported, donated, came out for a visit, and the fire, which included the fire department. The Hamilton Collection brought out a few cars to Winfield Road, some of their high-end luxury cars, which also attracted more people to come out. So it was a huge success. Specifically, I'd like to thank Sergeant Comar and CSO Perola for helping us put that all together and organize that. And again, all of the men and women of the police department that came together. So for some numbers, real quickly, in 2023, our Polar Plunge raised $3,775. In 2024, the Polar Plunge raised $8,300. In 2023, the Cop on a Rooftop raised $5,300. In 2024, we raised $9,239.
Wow.
So it was a huge success. So we want to really thank everybody who helped us, donated, supported, whatever they did for us. We really appreciate all the help.
Excellent. Well done. I got to stand a few minutes by a car that was worth $2.4 million. It was thrilling. And it didn't have a glass case around it either. So I don't know why they drive those on the road. But it was nice for Steve to bring those things out. I guess he does that on a regular basis to different charitable organizations and events. There was a lot of cars there that were unbelievable. So, oh, and that one, that $2.4 million one, he said, could do 0 to 60 in 1.4 seconds. Fastest car in the world. He wouldn't let me drive it. Smart man. Okay, that's all I have. Clerk? All right, Treasurer?
In 2022, the city had a referendum on whether or not the treasurer should be elected or appointed. And it was 1,841 for appointed and 3,340 for elected, which was just shy of two to one. There was a similar referendum back 25 years ago, and I'm told there was even one further back, a third one, before I came to Warrenville. When I was going around gathering signatures for the petition to run for treasurer after it was decided that it would be elected, I was talking to people, and of course, they had just voted in this referendum. And the people that I talked to, the ratio was about two to one. It was about the same as citywide. And I was just sort of discussing with people why they voted the way they did. And, you know, the ones who wanted to have an appointed treasurer thought it would be more efficient, and I'm sure some of them knew what a fantastic job Kevin's doing. Those who preferred having an elected treasurer, for the most part, said they thought just that the more people who were looking carefully at the money, the better off the city will be in the long run. And when I was elected, I knew that Kevin was doing such a fantastic job that he didn't really need me coming in and telling him what to do or anything. But I did feel that there was some room for another person to add some value to the position and bring it to the city. And just a sort of an adjunct member of the finance department, working with the other people who were working there. Everything's not always easy. I think sometimes there's a mismatch of expectation because we did go for so long without having a treasurer at all. So I just think it might be useful at the finance meeting next Tuesday, if it's okay with Stu, just to have a discussion of what some of my goals would be and have been, and how we can move forward and get some feedback from the council, if anyone else has any opinions on, you know, what should be made of the office.
Okay, thank you, Maury. Alderman. Alderman Lockett?
I just want to remind everybody about the special census. I did mine. Took me less than five minutes. I have a million kids, so pretty quick and easy remembering birthdays sometimes. Maybe they're right. I don't know. They're close enough, I think. But just to make sure everyone does that because it certainly helps the city. Thank you.
Okay. And I was told I could include the carpenter bees that are inhabiting my house.
I have four.
I have 400. So that should be pretty helpful to the city, I think, yeah. Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else? All right, City Administrator?
Just building upon Alderman Lockett's reminder about the special census, the electronic completion date is open until Thursday to file electronically. After that, people will start going door to door. We would like to get as many electronic filings as possible. So please, as a reminder, Thursday is your cutoff to file electronically if you haven't done so already. The other reminder I have is City Hall is going to be observing summer hours again, starting Friday, May 24, through the end of the summer, August 30, whereby on Fridays, we will be closed at noon. So Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. City Attorney? Okay, we will move on then. At this point, there is a need for a closed session to discuss the topics of litigation and the purchase or lease of real property. The other closed session topics will be addressed later in the meeting. If I could have the citations necessary at this point. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(11) litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent. And 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(5) the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second. May I have a roll call, Val?
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. We'll now enter into executive session. At the conclusion of the closed session, we will reconvene in the open session to conduct the remainder of business on the agenda. For anyone listening in on the electronic go-to meeting, please continue to listen. We will not end the session until the meeting is over. Okay? Do we take--
Alderman Berry is almost here. All right, we've come out of executive session. We're back in open session at this point to continue with the agenda for this evening. So could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda for this evening? Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the May 20, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Motion, second. Any changes to the agenda for this evening? Alderman Davalos?
I would like to remove number E, letter E.
And the motioner agrees to that?
Letter E, you'd say?
E as in Edward.
Okay. Okay, so we have one adjustment to the agenda for this evening. Okay, all in favor then of the amended agenda?
Aye.
Okay. What are you looking at me for? This was your turn to talk. Okay, let's see, now I got to figure out where I'm at. We have three minutes that need approval also. So Alderman Widener, again, please.
Thank you. I move to approve the revised minutes of the April 15, 2024 City Council Closed Session Meeting and to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the May 13, 2024 Community Development Committee Meeting.
Second. Okay, choose your second, Julie. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Motion carries the minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening is amended. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinances 02024-20, 02024-21, 02024-22, and 02024-23 authorizing final offers and condemnation of certain easements and property at 29W 530, 29W 606, 29W 630, and 29W 660 Mac Road. B, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02024-24, amending City Code Title III, Chapter II, increasing the number of Class A2 liquor licenses from C, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2024-25 approving the expenditure of motor fuel tax revenue in the amount of $299,050 during the FY 2025 for the maintenance of streets and highways as required under the Illinois Highway Code. D, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2024-26 approving a side letter of agreement with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter Number 214, for holiday pay and court time pay language changes. F, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-28, approving change order number one to the 2024 OTRS Number Two Phase One and utility improvements with MARTHAM Construction and direct staff to prepare a budget amendment for the TIFF Number Three Fund. G, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-29, authorizing use of rebuild ONI bond funds for the Mac Road project. H, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-30, approving the local public agency engineering services agreement change order number one in the amount of $188,862 with engineering resource associates for final engineering services. I, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-31, approving the amended local agency agreement for federal participation for the Mac Road path and the bridge replacement project, which involves the total cost sharing of $403,370 in federal funds and $180,092 in local funds for the total project. J, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-32, an intergovernmental agreement with Warrenville Fire Protection District for driveway apron replacement as part of the Batavia Road resurfacing project. K, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission meeting held on April 9, 2024. L, receive and file draft minutes of the plan commission and zoning board of appeals meeting held on May 9, 2024. M, receive and file report of invoices paid up to May 15, 2024 in the amount of $73,490 And N, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before June 3, 2024 in the amount of $338,760 and 53 cents.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries the agenda is approved as amended. We now...
Did you call Alderman Lockett twice?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Who did we miss? He was speaking for you. All right, we need to go back. Ouch. All right, we're not going to get into that now. We need to go back to item 6E. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Thank you. I would like to accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-27 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Warrenville and... [inaudible 0:59:21]
Is everyone back? All right, we've come out of executive session. We're back in open session at this point to continue with the agenda for this evening. So could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda for this evening? Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the May 20, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Motion is second. Any changes to the agenda for this evening? Alderman Davalos?
I would like to remove number E. Letter E.
And the motioner agrees to that?
Letter E, you'd say?
E is an Edward.
Okay.
Seconder agrees.
Okay, so we have one adjustment to the agenda for this evening. Any others? Okay, all in favor, then, of the amended agenda? Okay. What are you looking at me for? This was your turn to talk. Okay, let's see, now I gotta figure out where I'm at. We have three minutes that need approval also. So Alderman Widener, again, please.
Thank you. I move to approve the revised minutes of the April 15, 2024 City Council Closed Session Meeting and to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the May 13, 2024 Community Development Committee Meeting.
Second. Okay, choose your second, Julie. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening is amended. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance ordinances 02024-20, 02024-21, 02024-22, and 02024-23, authorizing final offers and condemnation of certain easements and property at 29W 530, 29W 606, 29W 630, and 29W 660 Mack Road. B, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02024-24, amending city code Title III, Chapter II, increasing the number of Class A2 liquor licenses from eight to nine. C, accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-25, approving the expenditure of motor fuel tax revenue in the amount of $299,050 during the FY 2025 for the maintenance of streets and highways as required under the Illinois Highway Code. D, accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-26, approving a side letter of agreement with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter Number 214, for holiday pay and court time pay language changes. F, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-28, approving change order number one to the 2024 OTRS Number Two, Phase One, and utility improvements with Martham Construction and direct staff to prepare a budget amendment for the TIFF Number Three Fund. G, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-29, authorizing use of rebuild ONI bond funds for the Mack Road project. H, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-30, approving the local public agency engineering services agreement change order number one in the amount of $188,862 with engineering resource associates for final engineering services. I, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-31, approving the amended local agency agreement for federal participation for the Mack Road path and the bridge replacement project, which involves the total cost sharing of $400,370 in federal funds and $180,092 in local funds for the total project. J, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-32, an intergovernmental agreement with Warrenville Fire Protection District for driveway apron replacement as part of the Batavia Road resurfacing project. K, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission held on April 9, 2024. L, receive and file draft minutes of the planned commission and zoning board of appeals meeting held on May 9, 2024. M, receive and file a report of invoices paid up to May 15, 2024, in the amount of And N, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before June 3, 2024, in the amount of $338,760.53. Alderman Widener?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Lockett.
Thank you. The motion carries. The agenda is approved as amended. We now need...
Did you call Alderman Lockett twice?
Yes.
I did twice.
Alderman Berry, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Who did we miss?
Me.
He was speaking for you.
As usual.
All right, we need to go back. Ouch. All right, we're not gonna get into that now. We need to go back to item 6E. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I would like to accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass Resolution R 2024-27, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Warrenville and DuPage County regarding the maintenance and ownership of certain properties, parentheses Warrenville and River Road, close parentheses.
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion, Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I took this off the agenda on behalf of Alderman Ashauer, so I'll turn it...
Okay, Alderman Ashauer?
The, I had it taken off because I disagree with this resolution. I don't agree with saddling the taxpayers with forever payments on roads that the county owns, but the other thing that is also important, I talked to the mayor and the administrator today about responsibility for flood protection associated with those properties. And I, Phil had told me that it was the county's responsibility, but the motion's probably gonna pass since I'm the one who doesn't want it, but the, perhaps we should consider including verbiage that says that we don't take responsibility for the flood protection associated with that roadway or the roadways were taken over.
Phil, could you add some light on this, please?
Sure. So I looked up the agreements that exist with the county for the flood protection berm for when it was constructed. There's an agreement between the city and the Forest Preserve District and the county, and it's clear in that agreement that even if the city were to take over the right-of-way, that the county still maintains its control over that berm because the DuPage County Stormwater wants to maintain that berm. They don't want to leave that to, well, they don't leave it to DuPage County DOT and they don't want to leave it to the city of Warrenville if we're taking over River Road. So there's an existing agreement that defines that the county maintains its rights to owner maintain that berm regardless of what the ownership of the right-of-way is.
So it sounds to me like they don't want to give up the right to maintain that, that they feel it's important, that they have that power.
Correct.
Okay. Is that helpful? Alderman?
Just the other thing is the property that they're considering conveying has a big flood protection berm on it, and as that goes forward, we should make that's identified and protected in some way that shows it as a county easement. At least that would be my recommendation, and that'll happen further along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Nay.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do have a need to go back into executive session again for a couple of items. Alderman Berry, would you like to give us the exceptions and a motion, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 I L C S 120/2, print C, print 21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval or by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06. And 5 I L C... Excuse me.
Alderman Lockett, would you like to speak for her?
Please do.
5 I L C S 120/2, print C, print two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
And by Alderman Davalos. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are entering into executive session again for this evening. We will not be conducting any business after the executive session, so thank you for your attention and attendance this evening. We'll see you next time around.